Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is December the 20th, 2012. Will please draw a stand and translate your standing for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're here to do the city's business. Please give us all the wisdom and guidance in making the decisions that will best benefit our citizens. I also ask for your direction in overlooking those that are out in the field as our military that are protecting our rights to be here and make those decisions, especially at this time of year during the holidays that they are absent. Please be with them and their families. In your name we pray.
Welcome to everyone here tonight. I will entertain motion to consider the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to ask for a couple of amendments to the agenda. One, to call an executive session to discuss real estate and as well as personnel.
Okay.
And then the second one, I've touched on this with several of the council members. This item seven, and I'm assuming it's A, is the first item under seven, action on business travel expenditure policy. I think the feeling is that that whole thing needs to be looked at and maybe revamped. So rather than spending time discussing it tonight on certain items, I'm going to request that we take that off of the agenda and get our act together a little bit more and then bring that up another time. So those are the two changes I'm making a motion to approve.
Any others?
Could we separate the two?
Yeah.
And do one of the kind?
As far as voting on the motion?
Yeah, on the amendments.
Amendments, sure. Let's go ahead and discuss that second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I also want an additional item I'd like to enter under council introduced items, and that's clarification of Georgia statutes. I'd like to address Mr. Dyer on an issue that has to do with Georgia statutes that I think would be of interest to all of us at this council. And if I might, since we have a motion, I don't know if we had a second to that or not, assuming that we had a second to the agenda modification.
I don't believe we had a second on that point.
I think we all split it too.
Okay. That's fine. I'll agree with you there. Okay. The first item is we're amending the agenda to adjourn the executive session to discuss real estate as well as personnel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor signify the same eye. Oppose, no. The next, what I believe was the elimination of the, under old business, action on business travel expenditure policy that Mr. Cummings had placed on the agenda. He's made a motion to do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion about that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have four objections to this intended motion to remove this from the agenda. First, we've always operated in this council with the council members' right to add an item to the agenda. I added this item to the agenda, and I think we're going down a dangerous road when we take away the right of the council members to discuss any item on the agenda. The second objection that I have to it is that this is the current policy, and there was no intention to spend any extensive time on this, that the reason it's on the agenda is because of, first of all, it was Mr. Huffman made a recommendation that we alter the amounts of money that are for the daily meal allowance, and that was the only topic that's changed in the current policy. And this is something that I've discussed with Mr. Wood, and he's in total concurrence, if I might say so, with that modification. Thirdly, this policy is the current policy. It was approved by this body after discussion on April 5th and April 19th. And fourth, when Mr. Huffman placed this agenda on the October 18th, and we discussed it on the 18th and November 1st, there was no objection from Mr. Bryan at that point in time. And what I'm trying to do is just clean up this one issue so that beginning of next year, we have what was construed to be an insufficient amount of money for covering our meal allowances. And to me, that's a simple motion, a simple discussion. It won't take any time whatsoever, so I think it should be left on the agenda. Thank you.
Yes, I do support the raises for dollars like I mentioned or brought up a few months, a few weeks ago. The only thing, the reason I seconded it was that the two paragraphs that are, or maybe more, I don't know, that controls the business travel expenditure policy, it's all of ours as far as I'm aware, that I seconded Mr. Bryan's motion because I do think we need to take something that's this big, even if it's down here, it's just too much verbiage in there, too much dot and i's, cross and t's. But I do support the raise of the board out. So I would like to revisit the whole, the whole thing.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm respectful on that. Thank you. I understand Mr. Cummings' point. Also, I understand we're sitting here debating this issue right now before we can get to it. We have a motion, we have a second, and I'd like to call the question. And then by no means will we walk away from this. We need to address it. I'm just saying, that's where we're at right now. We don't debate it now.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to...
I think Mr. Cummings questions.
I'll withdraw the motion based on Mr. Cummings' comments that it'll be short and sweet. I just didn't want to get into a long, drawn-out discussion that we really need to read. So the motion is withdrawn.
Okay. I received a letter today. Wait just a minute, we didn't, oh, you want to amend the agenda for that as well? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on this issue. I guess we don't need to keep voting. Okay. But we got to amend the agenda for that, right?
We have a vote on that coming.
Right. We have a motion and a second on that.
Yeah, I guess I'm inclined to add to clarification of Georgia statutes under council.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
But why aren't we splitting some?
That's one. They're all three.
Second, sure.
Okay.
Yes, my comment on this particular motion is that if this is just going to be a discussion, it's probably more suitable in a work session than at this meeting. And I would suggest that we defer it to the next work session unless there's some urgency to it.
Are we referring to Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead. Which one are you referring to? His statute?
Yeah.
Georgia statute?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't have any problem with that. I'm going to draw it to the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. So Susan, exactly what have we amended now?
Only the executive session.
Only the executive session. Only the executive session, is that? Okay, and we already approved that?
And I withdrew mine, so.
Now we got a motion to amend the, approve the agenda as amended, right?
Well, I believe he has one other item here. Did you have that? Go ahead. You have one other item? Yeah, I received a request today from Mondo Land Planning on behalf of Latimer Construction to, for council to award them an extended hours building permit effective from tonight until June of 2013. It would be the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. on Saturdays only. This is for a project at 6:30, 6:50, and 6:90 Marietta Road. Council has to approve those extended hours, but in order to approve those extended hours, if that was your pleasure, would need to be amended agenda voted. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I ask, Mr. Willie, is that just for one Saturday or is that more? No, sir, that would be Saturdays until June. See, it said until or through. It said until June.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add this item.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to recuse myself.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion except you, Mr. Goodwin, who recused himself. Now we will have our 10-minute public input up here. We have Richard Massicotti.
I just came to introduce myself because I have a client who wants to put a continuing care retirement center up here, so I guess I'll be coming up for a couple of weeks to find out for some guidance and direction where I should do this.
Wait, wait, come here a quick here, we'll get that out. I didn't, hey, go ahead, repeat what you said.
I said, well, I live in Marietta, and actually, I'm retired, but a client of mine wants to put a continuing care retirement center up here because he heard about the new hospital thing going over there, they did. And so I've got a part-time job in my retirement days here to find a place for them, and they wanted to go someplace where y'all would want it to be. So I'm looking for some guidance and direction. I don't know too much, except I think it should be in the city as opposed to the county.
Ken Patton, if I can get you to go.
Right, I spoke to Mr. Patton, he's on vacation until after Christmas.
Oh, okay, okay, very good.
He'll take care of me.
He certainly will.
Thanks.
Certainly will. Thank you for being here, and good luck. Melissa Catsteel?
He just added our item to the agenda, so I'll wait until you call the session.
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you.
Mayors, council, I was here two weeks ago to talk about how foolish I think it was to include a million dollars in your bond issued. At the time, I was appalled that nobody, not council, not staff, not fire department, had ever checked with the county fire department about what the training center that they're building, you want to duplicate. I'm anxious to hear tonight, I heard what Chad say last week, whether you want to discuss saving the taxpayers that million dollars plus interest, or you're going with Mr. Bear's idea that, hey, it's on there, let's go ahead and do it. I mean, a million dollars is money. Thank you.
Thank you. John Russ?
Mr. Mayor and councilman, thank you for the opportunity to sit before you and speak. In the fall of this year, there was a lot of talk about the problems we had with water bills and issues, the city's liability on the resident side of the meter. I came before you and asked Scott Wood and Jack Goodwin if they had any knowledge of any transaction other than the two isolated examples that had been brought before council regarding the city paying for repairs on the resident side of the meter. I had a piece of paper in my hand at that time which showed that the city had in fact paid a bill for a minor repair of Jack's water system, which had been damaged by excessive system pressure. The bill for this repair was black and white, and like all of us know, some of those, the real truth is somewhere in between. The city and the people that work here are not perfect. Given the additional facts that I have learned about this payment, and although I still think it's a violation of the strict no payment on the resident side of the meter rule, I think this payment was fair, correct, and the right thing to do. Most of the city council members work for somewhere between a dollar and $4 an hour for this job. And although they will all tell you that they don't do it for the money, I say, what money? They should not lose their rights to fair treatment as a resident of this city. Volunteering to serve on this council should not make you a second-class citizen. I do not think the payment brought before you regarding this issue, I do not think the payment brought before you was, this issue was wrong. The right thing for me to do was to have checked more facts before I spoke. I apologized to Scott Wood several months ago, and last week I apologized to Jack Goodwin. Thank you both, Scott and Jack, for graciously accepting my sincere apologies. I'm truly sorry. I have one more thing I'd just like to say, just in case the Mayans were playing a 5,000-year quote joke on us and we're still here on Saturday. There's a reminder that the Latner family on Saturday night is having a fundraiser up at the new restaurant up at Soleil. Many of you have heard about the tragic accident in Texas where Latner lost her life and Shane suffered minor injuries. Shane was a police officer in Canton for five years until 2010, when he joined the Holly Springs Police Force. I had the pleasure and honor to ride with Shane for $4 during my patrol car ride portion of the first Canton Citizens Police Academy. He's a very unique individual, needs our help. There's an article in yesterday's Cherokee Ledger News about the benefit dinner, it's called the Stratus Kitchen and Bar, at the fairways of Canton in Laurel Canyon. Time is from 5:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m., and there'll be live music from 8:00 to 10:00. All the proceeds, this guy didn't even know Shane, but he's a veteran also and just decided to do this, he's going to give all the proceeds to the Latner benefit fund which was set up at the Cherokee Bank. You can also drop off checks at the Cherokee Bank if you can't go. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Okay, that's all we have on the public input tonight. Next item is consent agenda. I will read the items, and if there's either of these that need to be removed for further discussion, just let me know. Approval of the December 6 council minutes. Approval award of landfill closure contract to Nolan Contracting. All these items, as you know, were discussed at our last work session. Approval of award of the SCADA contract to Lanier Contracting Company. Approval of EPD required soil erosion ordinance amendment. Approval of the Edouard River canoe launch budget amendment. And approval of the sale of the city's scrap metal. Are any of these items that need further discussion?
I'd like to, it's not ready to be, this is not the budget of the canoe launch, but I did visit the canoe launch. It is not what we expect out in council, I don't think. I remember us talking about it being a canoe launch and a flat-bottom boat launch. And I went over there and visited, it is not large enough to put a flat-bottom boat launch, and I know you had a question about wanting that, sort of meaning to our other citizens. So I just wanted to bring that up, that's all, I wanted to bring that to the attention of you.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on that? I guess we could pull that off if we want to go further. I tell you what, let's pull that one off for a little more discussion, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the remaining items under the consent agenda.
I will abstain on the minutes from the last meeting since I wasn't present.
Okay, okay. All right, so I have a motion and we approve these items with the abstention of Mr. Rush on the minutes. So, okay. Now, motion's taken. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion with the attention of Mr. Rush on the minutes. Okay, the Edouard River canoe launch budget amendment, is there someone that can address that, that issue? Mr. Wood? You know, I guess I'm scratching my head a little bit because you're right, we did discuss this two weeks ago, and the agenda went out a week before that, so we had, boy, at least three weeks now for questions to come up, and so I'm not sure that anybody's prepared to address it any further. I'm not totally sure what the question might be. I guess, if we send the agendas out in advance, and we can be made aware of these questions in advance, we can be sure we've got the personnel available to answer those questions. Now, Jovi's here, but I know we're putting you on the spot, Jovi, at the last minute, and I don't know what to say except I apologize for that. Jovi, if you could come up, let me, I understand what Jack is saying, and actually I have not, I have not actually looked at what's there, so I understood, it was my understanding that it would be a, not only a canoe, but a boat ramp type thing where you could put a flat-bottom or john boat or something like that in at that point. Is that what it is?
In my opinion, in my opinion, a flat-bottom boat is something that could carry side by side without having a back of trailer down into the water and let it float up off a ramp, you know, I mean, off the trailer into the water, which is what we have there. I mean, there's certainly variable widths of flat-bottom boats. It's got, I mean, it's a nice concrete pathway down through there, which met the, to me, the requirements of what we're at, what we're asked to put out there. At one time, there was talk about making it big and large enough to put in rescue boats, this, all this, you know, the large stuff, we said, no, the water's too shallow, there's no place to have a back trailers in, and to accommodate a boat of that size.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments at this point?
I was, I never thought we were going back boats in here. I thought we were going to, you know, have flat-bottom boats that people would carry down, but I will tell you, it's very narrow. It is made for canoes, it's not made for a flat-bottom boat. It's just very narrow. I did, I did not visit until a week or so ago and looked at it, and I got thinking about it because I knew we discussed this in two meetings, not one, about it being for flat-bottom boats as well as canoes, because there are lots of people who don't have canoes and have flat-bottom boats that want to enjoy that river. And we talked about that several meetings, and it's my fault, I guess, for not bringing it back up last week, or last meeting, but I wondered, is there a way that we can make that just a hair of ours, because it is pretty narrow down through there.
We can certainly look into it. Mr. Mayor, I've been out there, and it's just beautiful. Long side, it's, the way it's designed because of the bank, the way it was cut, I think if you try to widen it, you're going to get away with that riverside of the banking, and it won't work. Flat-bottom boats, in my way of thinking, it was just a flat-bottom canoe. Ones on the front, ones on the back, and they pick it up and walk down there with it. Now, you might have electric motor or something on it, but it, it looks like it was suffice what it was designed for, so I, yeah, it was a trailer, there's no way, trailer, no matter where we had put one in and how wide it was, the trailer wouldn't work, so it's a beautiful facility.
Okay. So, I would agree that it all depends on how wide a flat-bottom boat is. You can get them pretty wide, but generally, they're, you know, you go over the Lowe's and buy one of those aluminum flat-bottom boats, you should be just fine walking down there. Maybe a man seventy years old like me might not be able to carry one down there, but in my day, I could, I think I could do it, with some help.
My thoughts where you get one really wide, it's too heavy, too heavy to carry.
Too heavy, you'd have, you'd want to have a boat on a trailer. How close are vehicles going to be able to get to that, actually?
Well, they're just a few feet of the end of the ramp.
So, I mean, that's...
Some inch ramp.
I guess we need to get in our minds, too, the distinction between really a canoe launch and a boat ramp, what I consider a boat ramp, where you can actually back something in. And I'm assuming, I bet the reservoir, we got it, the reservoir, that's where you get back in. Anyone else, anything on that? Thank you, Joe.
Did we leave that on or off?
We actually pulled it off.
Pulled it off.
So we now need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Edouard River Launch Budget Amendment. Have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye. Oppose, no. All members voting for motion. Okay, action on business travel policy was withdrawn?
No.
Oh, okay, when did?
The motion.
Okay, the motion was withdrawn, taken off. Okay. Mr. Stevens?
Excuse me. Wait just a minute. We moved to the top of the agenda.
Oh, I beg your pardon. We did. We need to, we have a gentleman here from the city. Before we get to that item, if you don't mind, we do need to have Bill Echols do the item from the report and recommendation regarding the Edouard River Park defense. We can go ahead and do that, then we'll come back and do that. Bill, can you?
I'm sorry, I had my note, didn't leave the note there. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. This day's been a long time coming. A lot of energy's been put into it by members of the council and by the county. Let me give you a quick update. I understand that the session tonight is discussion only. Two weeks from now, the council will take some action. I plan to be back on the meeting, I think it's January 3rd. We tentatively have... We tentatively have board action. The first board meeting of the commissioners will be the 8th of January. We moved that off of the, they moved it off of the January 1st. So we'll have some time between now and the 8th in order for the board to discuss it tonight and then take some action hopefully on the 3rd. But if you'll recall, we had a presentation last February where we talked about the separation and the revision, the revisions to the Etowah Park and to move the five ball fields over to what we're referring to as the Killian site. It's next to the Kenny Askew Park off of Utter Better near Chatting Drive. We were successful in making that separation. I also want to thank council and the members of the commission board. When we talked about the budgets and the allocations within the park's budgets for the city's park at Etowah and the site at Killian, it brought a great deal of clarification. I appreciate that. And as a result, we were able to move forward with the budgets. We took bids on the 13th of December. We were, we were very fortunate to have received ten bids. Some combination, there were a few combinations to do both. There were some only Etowah and some only for Killian, but we received a five range of bids. We have two low bids, so the contractor for the Etowah is proposed is different than the low bid contractor for the Killian site. In looking at the budgets, I sat down with council in Beresford and council on Huffman throughout the design and within the last week and sat down and looked at the numbers. As you remember, we established a budget of just over $3.1 million for the base bid work for Etowah that would hopefully achieve some savings near the million dollar mark to allow the acceptance of some alternates. Unfortunately, while we did get a good range of ten bidders, the bids that we received for the county's portion of Killian was significantly over, but as we agreed, that is the county's to fund and we are working to fund that from other park bonds. But within the Etowah portion for the Etowah site, we've looked at several of the alternates in our discussions the other day with the allocation of the fees in accordance with the letters of August and September and some additional monies of about $57,000 for some additional clearing along the railroad right of way. It looks like only the first alternate for the playgrounds can be accepted to hold within the budget, but there was some discussion with the council members in the session earlier this week that the city may have additional monies of the amount of about $300,000. And if that additional money of $300,000 can be discussed tonight and can be made available, it would allow for the base bid, the alternate to be accepted for the playground and the alternate to be accepted for the bridge over the Etowah River. Obviously, if the city is in a position to fund some additional, find some additional monies to fund the, a couple of additional alternates, we're open to that. So in conclusion, I guess what I will need in order to take this to the county commissioners on the 8th or the meeting that we select is for the city to discuss the bids and to determine if there is additional money that can be allocated from the city. When that action is taken by the city council on its, at its meeting of the 3rd of January, I will need a letter, an email, preferably a letter that can be sent to me as well as county manager, Mr. Cooper, that the city has reviewed and accepted the base bid and is in a position to also recommend the acceptance of alternate one and possibly alternate two or whatever alternates the city council may desire in if you want to put additional money. There was some discussion about when that money would need to be made by the city to the county. I remain fairly certain that the board of commissioners and the county manager will want the money to be allocated from the city to the county at the time of award or very shortly thereafter, so that when we approve or when the commission approves the contract, the commission knows that that money is in fact in the county's hands and that we've signed a contract that is fully funded from the park bond and with the additional allocation if the city, if it so desires. I bring up the first two alternates only because of that was what was discussed, in no way intending to lean in any direction. Of course, it is the city's decision to decide which alternates it may want to accept in order to fund or not fund and provide additional money. So again, with that, I understand this is a discussion item tonight. I can add any comment, additional commentary if you might want, and then I can certainly come back when the city council takes action on the 3rd.
So let me ask Bill, in my understanding then, that the only alternate that we could include there was the playground equipment.
Yes, that's right. You may be able to reach in and look at one of the other alternates that was significantly below the bridge, but the discussion that we had only earlier this week was regarding one and two, mayor. But you're right, we can, we can look at any number of combinations. If the city does not want to put in additional money, how, how many alternates could be accepted and we can do that math?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Looking at the additional funding, the $300,000 that we were looking at in the original base bid, $300,000 out of stormwater, relying the current sewers, everything else, it all pertains to stormwater. So what we'd be looking at is coming up with the $300,000 out of the stormwater funds. The second part is $118,151 dollars and that would bring us in to where we could accomplish, of course, the base bid, the playground, the bridge over the river, the lips with the lighting and irrigation and the landscaping, which is the trees, and we could accomplish all of that utilizing the $300,000 plus, I'll just say it's $120,000 from the park We can have the park as we planned it, looked at it and accomplished that. So what Mr. Echols will need back from council in January the 3rd is our acceptance of that with that money, saying we're going to come forward with it. So council needs to say it's okay to take the $300,000 utilizing for stormwater improvements in the park and the recreation, parks and recreation. So we will get everything we wanted, we'll have a beautiful park and that takes care of those four alternates.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, a question, Mr. Echols, what was the charge to put the top on top of the provision? John may have that.
That, that was, it's about $180,000. But we are at the base, you're talking the amphitheater. The amphitheater in the base bid is going to be, it's on the ground, the stage, the walls around it, everything will be there. What's missing is four columns and the top, and that's about $180,000.
The low bid for, from Georgia Development, the alternate to add to amphitheaters, $291,000. $291,000.
Right, yeah. Yes. But, okay. Well, you asked what the cost of it is, but their bid, so.
Their bid, their bid is $291,161.
But if we came back a year from now and wanted to add that to it, we don't have to use them, do we?
No, sir. If you, if you want to come back and add it at some point, you have a design, you've purchased that design from HDR in yesterday. If you want to come back and do that under a separate contract and purchase that, there's nothing that prevents the city from doing that. And you may in fact get a higher number, you may in fact get a lower number. But at this time for right now, that is, that is the bid. And some of the bids were all over, some of them were 276, some of them were 300. But as we look at all of this, it does begin to sort of change the playing field. And just not to get into too much confusion on this thing, if I look at another bidder, they bid the amphitheater for $20,000. Now somewhere there's a, there's a mess. But now, in order to take that, in order to take that, you now have to look at their other bids and where the playground under Georgia Development, $321, that same contractor wants $575,000. So when you start adding their A and their B, it changes the dynamics and my estimation is, I need, I need directions from the city about which alternates you want, because as we've explained, which alternates you want must be determined at contract award and then I'll need to look to see if that does change the low bidder.
That is alternate six, the amphitheater and that by this standing, because of that cost is out. But important thing to realize is, again, the stage, the steps, the walls around it, everything on the ground, including electricity, pounds, everything is ready. There will be four holes set there where the columns will be placed. We do have the plants, the spats.
It's ours.
And the top. And the top runs around $170,000.
Just to purchase that.
Purchase that.
Still have to install.
Yeah, that's right. So the answer for you would be yes, we can. And right now, we can't have that. So we have the other four alternates.
If I understand correctly, if we do the bridge and the playground, we're $300,000 short. Is that correct as such?
Yeah, that is.
No?
Yes. If the, if the, if the council wants alternate one for the playground and alternate two to add the bridge, you have to, you have to provide additional money in the amount of about $300,000 if you want playground and the bridge.
Okay. And again, that would come from stormwater.
Then the use of stormwater is because we are doing approximately $300,000 worth of stormwater to the park. So that's the rationale behind using stormwater funds to pay for it.
For the council's benefit, there was, there were some negotiations about when the money would be paid between me and councilman Huffman. And I think it came down about when the money would need to be allocated and I think it sort of came down to a coin toss and I think I may have, I may have gotten across the fence line first. And the reason is based upon if it is in fact stormwater money, almost the very first work item that we are going to perform is going to be stormwater. And that, I think, drives even more that the county commissioners will want that additional money of about $300,000 almost immediately, if not prior to their award of the contract.
One last question. Is there available in surplus money recreational funds that could be used instead of this $300,000 towards the additional cost in the park? Not available tonight and achieved other purposes that may be forthcoming for low dollars. Thank you. Let me, let me ask a question. This is not you, Bill, actually, but stormwater, stormwater money, I'm assuming that this if approved would certainly have an impact on the projects that have been outlined in the stormwater meetings in the past. And so they would really need to go back and rethink the projects that they were planning on doing in stormwater. Is that a fair assessment? I guess so. But they would, they would need to go back because they have, they've kind of looked at the stormwater funds for some time and they have outlined the projects that they have out into the future in quite a number of years. And so that would need to be adjusted and amended to do this and it certainly may be a good thing to do.
Mr. Mayor, there was an issue a couple of months ago in the stormwater committee. The stormwater committee felt that there was abundance of money in the fund and they wanted to cut the fund by 25%. So the money's there, so all we need to do is allocate it to this $300,000 and they still have their projects. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I remember that discussion and sat in one of those meetings with the stormwater committee. And I believe there's a lot of funds there and we're still collecting. So whatever we had at that time, which was a couple of months ago, we're still collecting and it'll be a few months before we have to pay. And Mr. Echols was so kind to bring over a deposit slip from the county so he could do.
I think we just need to, we just need to make sure that the stormwater committee is advised of this and I think Joby can handle that through the mayor, that this is something that's going to be, have an impact on what they're doing and a plan to do. So anyway.
And mayor, I can't speak to Mr. Cooper. I don't know if he's going to require an intergovernmental agreement or whether he's at least willing to accept a letter with a motion from council and also from the city attorney that this transfer and use of the money is, it's, well, he may, he may want an amendment to maybe even the memorandum of understanding that sets forth the park program, but he'll, we'll need some, something in writing as orders to take. And if this process is working, we just awarded some trails for Woodstock and working with city manager Moon, the council also did, sent us a very similar letter.
Maybe we can get a sample of that letter so we don't have to be, go so much into the woods, the weeds, you might say?
So we don't have to make this thing as complicated? And what I'm, what I'm doing is I'm just waiting to fill in what alternates and how the money will be. And it basically is what I did for Mr. Moon, is that I sent it over for Woodstock and they initialed it at the bottom after he got council.
And Mr. Cooper was pleased for that?
He, it was attached to the board agenda and it went through board of commissioners. They had some questions, they had some questions relative to the Woodstock, not having all of their easellets in place, but in terms of the approval for the council, that seemed to work out.
So I'm going to assume he would be pleased to send a letter from us?
If it's, if it's backed up by a city and the city manager signs it and says.
We wouldn't send it unless it was.
I fully, I fully, you know, a letter similar to how the budget was reallocated back in August worked for both of us being, it'll, something similar to that will work well for us.
Anyone else have any?
Just one thing. If council would like to look at any of these numbers and stuff, I have that and we can dialogue on it because it needs to be kind of long through. But we have two weeks to think about it and we want to have very positive results in January the 3rd so we get this project off the ground. It's been hanging out there for quite a while.
If anybody wants to look at the bid tabulation, you can go to the Cherokee County website under the bids and RFPs and click and the bid tab has been, has been posted. There was a, there was a minor error that we caught in our review of that, that bid tabulation has been corrected. It was only off by about $5,000, but it has been corrected. Again, what we're looking for is a decision by, by council to tell us what alternates you want and if you want to fund some additional money. That is clearly up to the, to the city council and then we're good to go. If it needs, if it, if it needs to move a little bit, I'm not, I think we had talked that we would try to move the projects forward, but I know that, that the city wants to get Etowah started. I'm not certain what, what Mr. Cooper and the board may want to do, but since they're two separate contractors and two separate awards, we may, we may move to take action on the 8th to move the Killian forward, which is the ball fields, which I know brings a great deal of importance for both the city and the county.
But if this is. If this is approved, Bill, we get you your stuff at a timely manner on January the 3rd. When would the proceed to work order be issued and when will work actually begin?
The way it works is that the board of commissioners will approve it. I will then send out the contracts to the selected contractors with a notice of award. They didn't have about 10 days to two weeks to get their bonds and insurance back. They didn't get it to me. It's then reviewed by procurement, and then it goes to Mr. Cooper's office, and he gets Chairman Aaron's signature. And so generally, while it doesn't take a month, it's generally around about three to three and a half weeks. And so if the board approves it on the 8th of January, it's safe to say that probably the first week in February, we would break right. Or we could just have a contractor moving forward. So we could have a groundbreaking for the city if it's so desired.
Mr. Echols, is the contractor that's been selected, is he prepared to move forward at the times that we anticipate getting approval from the...
It's my understanding that the apparent low bidder for Etowah, Georgia Development Partners is also, despite coincidence, the contractor that was just recently selected for the Woodstock Trails. So we have, we've vetted them, we know what their capabilities are, and they're ready to move forward almost with two projects for the county at the same time. So they're ready to proceed. They'll start sometime in February, 1st of February, beginning of February. Winter conditions, weather conditions, we'll get started.
Who oversees this project?
It will be over, under my office of capital projects for the counties, county's contract, it's the county's money through the park bond. And so the architect, HDR that you've met, Robbie, he's been here before, he'll have people that will assist in the review of subbids, they'll make site visits, they'll approve pay requests, things of that nature. What we usually have found to be the most convenient thing is that once the contractor gets awarded, we have what we call a pre-construction kickoff meeting, and then we'll meet with that contractor usually about every two weeks. Weekly seems a little bit too much, a month is too far out. And so it works for us, it works for us on our aquatic center, works on our other projects. And so every two weeks, we will have a progress meeting, and we will be on site virtually every day. There are people within Robbie's staff at HDR, and also the people that assist me in capital projects. It's safe to say, if we're not there every day, it's a rarity.
Does the city participate in any...
The city can participate. Again, going back and using Woodstock, their capital projects office will also have an involvement. So Joby and any of his staff are most welcome, encouraged to attend these biweekly meetings so that the city can look at it and see that things are progressing the way that you expected, the way you want, working in conjunction. The more eyes and ears that I have watching the contractor is that everybody's advantage, including the contractor.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, sir, I just have one brief question. Mr. Echols, we've just come off about a 10 or 11-year project, the reservoir that was originally going to cost $20 million. We're now up to $120 million. We're a little skittish. Are we going to have cost overruns and unexpected expenses come up? And like, we just approved tonight another million on the SCADA contract for the reservoir that wasn't even in the original deal. Not trying to be facetious, but I just want to hear from you that we're not going to get into this kind of thing.
I can't tell you that we're not, I can't give you guaranteed that we're not, but because stuff happens, and we do have a lot of grading and a lot of dirt. One of the things that we did do to take into that account so that if we do have changes, how can we best have competitively bid the cost of those changes? And if you were to look deep into the bidding documents, we included some unit prices for additional excavation and some stone fill and some things of that nature. We established our estimate of quantities that we thought might be necessary. We may spend less than that quantity, we may spend more than that. But the contractors were required to have a competitive bid that they determine times our quantity that was a part of the low bid. And so if a contractor out there, instead of bidding $20 a cubic yard, wanted to bid $120, it affected his bottom line, and he knew that it would not, that it would affect his ability to have the lowest bid. And so it was competitively bid, unit prices. Those costs are inside of the contract, and those costs for the Etowah project for this contractor is approximately about $65,000, $70,000 that we have that's already inside the contract that would be used to manage any of the soil condition changes that we might have. If you go back and remember the February discussion where we talked about the distribution of the budgets, there's also about $136,000, $137,000 of change order contingency or construction contingency that has already been budgeted should we hit unforeseen or change conditions. So we think that we budgeted for that. We think that we have anticipated some changes with the soil, as I mentioned, on the unit prices. But I cannot tell you that we might encounter change. We think we budgeted for it.
Any last? Yes, please. Mr. Echols, in the estimating of what the cost of this park was going to be, it has been missed a little bit. And I guess if we have this overrun like what Mr. Bryan is talking about, $100,000 or $137,000 is good, but let's just assume it's $200,000. Who's responsible for the addition? It's your contract.
It is my contract. And the way that we're establishing the division of the monies, I've budgeted the unit prices, I've budgeted up to about $136,000. If we exceed the unit prices in $136,000, my estimation is that it will have to come out of the park bond fund, and it will affect some others. But as I've told this council, and as I tell the board of commissioners and Mr. Cooper, I zealously go and watch that $90 million every day. And I'm smart enough to know that foolish things happen, and so I'm always holding a little bit of money around, and you're right. I had to dig deep into our pockets to find the budget overrun, and I'm a bit embarrassed and somewhat concerned that the estimates that we were told in this room in February were off more than just a bit. But if it helps in some discussion, when I looked at the bid tabulation, Georgia Development was submitted a bid, the second bidder was roughly $5,000 higher than Georgia Development. And the closer I can have numbers in a competitive bid tells me that I have similar pricing, similar observation, and a similar understanding of the documents that produced by HDR. That gives me some comfort, but we are a little bit above the budget, and I'll have to take care of it. As I said, the park bond mechanic is the source of those monies.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to thank Mr. Echols for coming in this evening and giving us this update. I just want to go back to some important points is, we do have the funds if the council approves this. Playground, the bridge, the lifts, with the lighting, around the areas, irrigation, and landscaping, that's all the trees. So we have everything we were looking for. At the January 3rd meeting, it's a work session, but I'll be asking for a call meeting if needed, where we can vote on this, to get that done, get that out of the way, and then we go and have a work session. So I want to make sure that's on the document. And then we'll turn it over the 8th, we'll be at a call, and we'll be ready to go. We'll have that stuff prepared, every how council votes, and we can move as fast as we can on this.
So that was a total amount that we would need from the city to accomplish that, was that $418,000 roughly?
Yep.
Okay.
If $418 gets you a little bit more, the 418 would purchase the additional alternates for the jet planning, it's Mr. Beresford said, and also the landscaping. I think the other alternates that we looked at, the trails to bowling were there for pricing purposes. You have that designed, you can bid that at any time in the future. We also looked at one deduct alternate for sod, and I strongly encourage the council not to take that. I think it's better if we sod it and not seed it. We have an immediate use of the park. Again, we put some of these things in there for budgeting purposes. We put them in there because the council in our discussion in February wanted to know what all of these items costed. We knew we weren't going to be able to award them, even if we'd had bids smack on the budget, we would not have been able to report them. So many of those things. If there's any questions out of the city manager's office, if somebody wants me to help run some numbers, I'm here through the hall, thanks, Mayor. And I thank the council for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you. Okay, we're back to now to the action on our discussion, our action on business travel expenditure policy, Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we increase the daily meal expenditure amount from $38 to $42 a day, which consists of $8 for breakfast, 14 for lunch, and $20 for dinner. And that's the only change to the existing travel, business travel expenditure policy.
Now, do we have a second to that motion, Bill? Any other discussion? Okay. If not, those who favor significant, you have questions?
I was just going to comment that the earlier discussion said we need to redo the whole travel policy, and I think we do. But this part of it is something immediate that we discussed before, and I think we should go through. And if we decide to do the travel policy, I'd suggest the mayor appoint a committee of council people to look at it and take some time and do it right.
Okay. Any last? If not, those who favor significant saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Next item, discussion and possible action of the fire services bond referendum. I think some of the council members, including myself, have discussed in my office and at different times over the past few weeks, issues that are related to this, and some of the issues may or may not be. But it's, we talked about the need for support of this fire bond referendum, and it would be, what we have been looking at is in the amount of around $6 million to fund capital expenditures for the Canton Fire Department. This would include the construction of three new fire stations and the renovation of the downtown fire station. The three new stations will be located in the Law Canyon area between, second, between State Route 20 and 140, near the location of the North Side Cherokee Hospital, and the third location in the Bluffs area. Upon completion, the Bluffs Fire Station would serve as the fire department's headquarters. And we even talked, it may even have like a community room or something like that, which would be very useful, I think. Now, to pay for the operational costs of new fire station, certainly some of the discussion has been that it would most definitely require an increase, if we pay for it from the general fund, would require increasing the millage rate on property taxes, which, you know, we just don't see exactly. It would be fairly minimal for that amount of money. And it would be over like a 20-year period. We also discussed here the need for support of the creation of the Department of Economic Development, which will be under the direction of the city manager. The Main Street Director would be made part of this department and report directly to the Director of Economic Development at the time the newly created position is hired. And third, we discussed the support for changing the city charter to delete the current provision concerning the mayor's staff and adding a provision to create the position of administrative assistant. If funded in the budget, the administrative assistant shall be appointed by the mayor. The process of charter change to create this position of mayoral administrative assistant shall begin no later than January 1, 2013. The administrative assistant shall work primarily for the mayor, but shall also provide assistance to other council members as requested and needed. This should be presented here tonight really as a proposed memorandum, I think, of understanding in these three important issues. And we made discussions, and there was some give and take in each of these areas. And it's like Mr. Beresford said earlier, when there's any kind of compromise, any kind of discussion, everyone walks away feeling like they didn't get what they wanted, you know? So it may be, that may or may not be good. I think it probably is good. But at any rate, that is, I think what we would need particularly tonight is hopefully we can do is a confirmation of that in general terms, a discussion and confirmation. There's been no decisions made, we can only do those here. So if, you know, I'll open it up for any discussion here. And we will need certainly to, probably to finalize that amount for the bond referendum, I would think, with you, that $6 million, which is, would be included in this and part of the discussion here. Mr. Beresford, yes?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think it's important to stress the fact that we have spent a tremendous amount of time this past year in reference to this fire department for our city. It's an important function of our city and it's an important function for us and what we do here on council. And I think as you referenced to the fact that some agreements, dialogue, discussions have finally taken place where we could reach some point of agreement, and we can move ahead on this important issue. And a special note should be made, going from the 8 million, we did take out that million dollar training facility. So we're in the process of looking at working with the county. But again, in discussion, in open discussion with this council, these numbers, proposals are going to be thrown out from time to time. And it's excellent that we have input from our citizens questioning why we would have certain things. And we're always open for that input, and that helps get rid of that million dollar concern. We will have the proper equipment to support these new fire stations, and then also we will have the operational issue and part of that. So we're tracking on that, and I appreciate everybody's effort here on council to pull together on this aspect.
Just a short question, and I'm not sure if Mr. Beresford or Mr. Woods best to answer it. If we go through with the proposed $6 million bond over 20 years, can you give us just a little ballpark figure, what that might mean to the individual residents, what kind of monthly or yearly tax that might be?
I knew that number had been worked on, I just didn't know who best to address that to. Mr. Bryan Sky?
Bill, you can discuss that.
This is my big moment up in rear end. For every $1 million that we borrow at an interest rate of 3%, advertised over 20 years, the cost to a property owner of a $100,000 house will be $4 annually. Therefore, for a $6 million bond, the annual cost will be $24 for a property owner with a house that's appraised at $100,000.
Anyone else have a question?
I'd like to just, just stress again, this Department of Economic Development that we're part of this proposed agreement that we're working on here is going to be what we've needed for a very, very, very long time. And we'll be hearing more about that as the job description is developed for director. job description is developed for Director of Economic Development and the description of what the department will do. But we're not reinventing the wheel. We're going out and studying the most successful economic development programs around, and the city of Woodstock happens to be one of the most successful ones in the state, if not the United States. So, it'll be modeled similar to that. We'll be working very closely with the Cherokee County Economic Development Office, Chamber of Commerce, State Economic Development Office. This will be good for the entire city as well, well as downtown. And the office will most likely be located downtown on Main Street, in the heart of the city, where it'll be visible and, you know, we'll hear a lot more about that. But that's what I'm very, very excited about, working very, very hard to make happen.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Like Mr. Rush, thinking that there should be a committee on the business travel policy, I also concur with the use of official committees to investigate and propose issues. And I would respectfully ask that the mayor form a committee to look into the establishment of an economic development director's position stating not only the requirements that we'd like to meet, but the objectives that we expect this person, when they're hired, to fulfill and accomplish, and that we do it officially.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that our city manager, who has very vast knowledge in this area, to put together a package and come up, bring it to the council for us to look at. I am by no means an expert on a lot of these issues that come up, and we should utilize who we have. And I think I would like to suggest Mr. Wood, and I think my colleague next to me here has a little bit more in-depth answer on it.
Yeah, I was actually gonna say the same thing. None of us here, my knowledge, except for Mr. Wood, is an expert on economic development. He's had extensive experience, successful experience in different programs throughout the state, and in many, many, in fact, the majority of our cities, where we have a city manager, one of his main jobs is promoting the economic development of the city. We've got a valuable resource here that we've absolutely not used, and I think that that should be, but because the department will be under Mr. Wood as well, like all other city departments are, it's just appropriate that he be the one charged with the organizing and creating of this department. It'll still be subject to our approval, which will be perfectly fine, but I think we need to use the resources that we have on hand.
A side note there, I'll navigate to him, it's gonna, I spoke with Missy Martin this afternoon, and she is going to be sending, I think, an invitation as there's a economic development seminar that is sort of designed for informational purposes, how the process works with the state and through the county and all that. It's like a day long, it's in January. And so, I suggest she had, she had mentioned it to me, and I suggested that she send that invitation to each of the members of the council here as well, so that some of you, if you would like to attend, you certainly can there. I think they're gonna have like a shuttle or the carpool on the way down there and back, but it starts about, leave here about eight-thirty and get back, I think, or leave down there about four, so. Jack, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I recently had lunch with the State Economic Development people. We were at a function, and they sat right across from me. I didn't even know who it was, but they introduced themselves. And it was at LJ, and they've been up there working for quite some time, and I told them that we were thinking about this, and they said they would welcome the opportunity to come in here and help us. Let the right people get us on the right.
I don't really have any problem with Mr. Bryant, what he proposed. The only reason I suggested a House of Committee is I would like to see that we open this to public input and suggestions and ideas, and that's what the committee does. If Mr. Wood and Mr. Bryant don't have any problem making available meetings to where others can input their ideas, I'm not saying directed or anything along that line, then I don't have a problem with doing it that way. But I don't, I don't wanna see it done in a completely closed environment. We have a lot of concern and interest at citizens, and that public forum should be at least listened to.
Yes, sir. We're thinking along with the same lines. I've already met with the two biggest downtown property owners that are not the, of course, the county and the Board of Education are the two biggest, but I've met with the two biggest individual property owners and have encouraged their input. I said call Mr. Wood anytime, he'll be glad to meet with you, sit down with you. We want to hear from everybody that has an economic interest in the city, because the more ideas and experience, the better.
Okay. Anyone else? I think we probably should at least entertain a motion to approve the concept of the discussion that we have had and the issues that have been brought forth here. And I think they are somewhat.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying this was kind of a, these three issues that you had brought, you brought up, is that that should be in the form of a memorandum of understanding?
Right, that's what we're gonna try to do, yes. That's all I'm asking, because it needs to be affirmed here that that's the direction that we're gonna be moving in.
So, do we place a motion that we do that?
That's what I.
Is that what you're looking for? I might place a motion.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
No, I think we need to understand, yes, sir, I'm sorry. I think we need to understand that does not preclude the action on the deleting the charter about the mayor's staff. We're still gonna proceed with the vote there, but we're also going to start working towards the creation of this new position of assistant, right, administrative assistant, and that would be most likely the same person who is now the mayor's assistant.
Should we include that portion?
It says in here that it will begin, the process should begin no later than January 1. So, it takes at least, you know, right at a month or so to implement that. So, I think if we're all in for it here, or reasonably so, then we would be in the direction. We have, you have something else?
Motion second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All members voted for the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do we still need to have a separate vote now to establish the bond referendum?
I would assume. We need another one? That's it?
Well, we have an actual referendum that we're gonna send to the Justice Department. So, if you do a motion to, the one I drafted at eight.
That was supposed to be six million dollars?
Correct. And then we'll prepare a new referendum for certain of that six million dollars.
Okay. So, vote.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, you have something, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, in spirit cooperation will go along with the six million dollars. It does include equipment or fire engines that have a normal life cycle of ten years, and we'd be financing them for twenty years, which is sort of like saying, once it's obsolete, we're still paying for it, although we do get longer than ten years out of it. But in spirit of cooperation and everything, I'll go along with it.
Thank you. Have a motion, second. Anything else? If not, those in favor, signify. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All members voted for the motion. Okay. Next item is the action of a resolution to authorize GMA to end the mayor and council pension plan. We have a motion to, we did this. We have a motion, we have a second. Motion and second. Any other discussion?
Well, yeah, I might have a discussion. Being on the retirement committee, are we, do we necessarily need to do this right at this particular moment? Is there some driving factor that we, because the committee has not formally said that's what we're gonna recommend, although the, I would say if you had to vote in the committee right now, they would probably, would say that. But is the timing correct?
I think the timing is correct in that we're about to follow this with a vote on a compensation increase for mayor and council. So, my suggestion that we, it's give and take. You gotta give the retirement up for the upper part. That is just my thought.
Well, I understand that was the logic behind it, and I'm all for it, believe me. I'm for both, both motion. I was just wondering about the timing.
Well, I'm two of the committee are for it, so I don't know what a quick change, so might as well proceed.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. And that, what that actually does is ends the retirement benefits for any council member. It continues until their term ends, and after that, again, there is no more retirement. So, beginning in January 2014, there will be no retirement for those elected in the following 2013.
Cruel, dumb.
Okay. Actually, one question. If a council person or a mayor should come back and run again at a future date?
It doesn't accumulate anymore.
Do they still collect a retirement?
You mean, okay, go ahead.
I think that was answered during one of our discussions with GMA, that their retirement benefit would be suspended during the time of which they served, i.e., if they had already started receiving benefits, got elected, they would be switching to salary compensation, but that the retirement pension isn't lost, but they wouldn't accrue any new benefits, A, and the benefit that they maybe have been receiving at the time would be suspended because they were receiving compensation for serving it as an elected official.
Okay. Did we vote on that or not?
Well, I don't think we need to vote, I think that's the.
All right.
That's the clarification.
All right. Next item, section, second reading and action on ordinance to delete charter section.
You didn't vote on the compensation ordinance.
Oh, compensation?
Yeah. We have.
Okay. We had a motion and second, those in favor of the compensation ordinance.
We haven't had a motion.
Oh, she read, and then you went back to the other one. You just read off.
Okay, let's make a motion. You made the motion, didn't you?
Yeah, the original motion on compensation is one that I made. So, I make a motion again that we increase the salary of mayor to ten thousand annually and council members eight thousand annually, and to be paid monthly in twelve equal installments for each month. The council member or mayor is in office and is to take effect in the next election year.
Okay. Beginning January 2014.
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Second. Discussion. Mr. Gundy?
Yeah, I think what it really says in the way that it's been written is that the earliest date permitted by state law, whatever that is.
Whatever that is. I just wanted to leave the room in case some other date was effective. It's at least January 1, 2014, it would start.
And the other point that I think should be brought up, because we sort of discussed this without Mr. Rush's attendance at the last meeting, is that we altered it to make it paid in the twelve equal installments, which he may not have been aware of because he wasn't here at the last meeting. And the main reason that I suggested that we put that in is because we get into a conflict with the other one, and I'll give you a scenario that could conceivably happen. If we're in the last term of a council member, and we come to September, for some reason, that council member can't serve the remainder of the term, and we, a new council member is appointed for three members, we get into a conflict if the compensation is paid all in one lump sum. Who gets what is really the question? Does the new council member get the full amount for the year, and the prior council member who served for nine months, who maybe couldn't serve a lot for health reasons, gets none? This way, it basically sets the annual amount, and then it's basically earned monthly paid, and then that question will never arise or come about.
Rush, here's.
I believe I read that into the motion.
Good. Question that I have now is that, based on what, if I had that it's according to state law, we don't, we're not really sure who would come off when necessarily, right?
Right.
In other words, Jack and I, who are beginning a term, could very well come off reasonably immediately, and anyone else during their term could come off, right? By this vote, that would put us, you know, not, and some members not being able to finish their term, right?
Well, no, it's.
What did you say?
Well, yeah, make sure we're talking the same thing. The compensation change, it's just drafted, as barely as state law permits. My understanding of state law is that everybody can get the new pay as of January 2014, that everybody can get the same pay. So, if, and my reading of the statute is that everybody will get the increased pay as of January 2014, because it can take effect after the next election.
Right. Okay.
I just put the vagrant language, the vagrant language in case it was a later date.
Right.
It was a.
Okay. All right. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
All members voted for the motion, except for Mr. Gundy, who voted no. Okay. Next item, second reading on the action of ordinance to delete charter section 2435 F, only, delete paragraph F only. Okay. That's your motion, the motion. We have a second.
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Mr. Gundy?
The deletion of this really isn't, you know, again, I've said, you know, go through the charter, and now we've made a resolution that we're gonna come back and change this paragraph. I guess an agreement has been reached to change this paragraph to allow for an administrative assistant, which is just to basically limit what's in there. I would assume the language would still say appoint or employ a single administrator assistant. The elimination of this actually accomplishes nothing because it can't be retroactive, so that it just says that you can't hire as mayor anybody. I think we're just voting on something that's, at this point, unnecessary, so.
Anyone else? If not, those in favor, signify. Saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
All members voted for the motion, except for Mr. Gundy, who voted no. Next item, actual resolution for term limits. Do we have any in your package there? Do we have a motion regarding this item?
I guess it's me, then, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion?
Yeah.
With that as term limits?
Yeah. No, we petition the General Assembly to allow Canton to, so that no person elected in the general municipal election of 2013 or any election thereafter shall serve as mayor or council member.
Do we have any in your package there? Do we have a motion regarding this item?
I guess it's me, then, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
With this term limits?
Yeah. No, we petition the General Assembly to allow, so that no person elected in the general municipal election of 2013 or any election thereafter shall serve as mayor or council member for more than two consecutive terms of office.
Motion. And a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Mr. Cummings.
Mr. Mayor, I have a problem with the wording. Mr. Dyer and I have discussed this and my suggestion for the wording is to be changed to the following. Any person elected to two consecutive terms of office, each commencing after January 1st, 2013, is ineligible for qualification to seek a third consecutive term for the same office. The one that you have in front of you is loaded with some ambiguity. For example, there it is, the first problem that I have found with it is that if a council member runs two consecutive terms and decides to run for mayor, they would be excluded from doing so. That could be argued. The second problem, and I think Mr. Dyer confirmed this, is that any sentence is legally, can be legally split into components. If you look at the components of this and can answer yes to all of them, it can have a different meaning. For example, no person elected in the general municipal election of 2013 or any election thereafter, if you say yes to that, that the person was elected in a municipal election after 2013 or an election thereafter, shall serve as mayor or council member. That means that anybody elected to serve as mayor or council member can do not do so for more than two consecutive terms of office. Those two consecutive terms of office could also be construed to be retroactive and not terms of office after 2013. And I'll go to Mr. Dyer and have him confirm if he agrees with the ambiguity that I've stated.
Yes. In my defense, I copied this from what the legislation was passed for Lawrenceville. But yes, I agree with Mr. Cummings. His suggests the language is clearer about that fact.
And I'd like to suggest that we, that I give Mr. Dyer this and he bring this resolution back to us at our voting meeting in January on the 17th with the clearer language so that we have.
Mr. Bashford?
Are you there?
Yes, sir. Bashford.
Clearer language. That's fine. But all that we just said was not clear to me, so maybe if I see it in black and white, I might be able to trail along with it. But I understand what you're trying to say. But fewer words are always better than a bunch of attorney legalese. Excuse me.
Brian? It did catch my eye about the, here. Do we want it to actually mean that once a person has served two terms in either elected office, whether it be a combination, one-term mayor, one-term council member, two terms council member, two terms mayor? Is that the intent? That once they've served two terms as an elected official, they then can't come back and serve, say, if they have served two terms as council member and then you want to run for mayor? Is that what we want to do, is prohibit them? I mean, my opinion, I say yes. Once you've been in elected office eight years in the city council, it can't in any capacity as enough.
You're right. And you prohibit someone from running for another elected official.
And part of this, when I was drafting this, of course, we hadn't talked about the details of what everybody really meant. What I was drafting, what I understood, everybody agreed to was you could be council member for two consecutive terms. And if you want to run for mayor, you can be mayor for two consecutive terms. And then it's per office, and that's what Mr. Cummings was trying to clarify.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My attitude was similar, that if you wanted to run for two terms as councilman and then two terms as mayor, and if you want to go back for two more terms as councilman, you could do that too. But, you know, after that many years, you probably wouldn't be able to walk. But I think that while Mr. Cummings wants to get it, you know, very specific and very clear, I wonder when we have to give this to the General Assembly. Is there a timing issue if we start pushing this off into January?
I happened to see Andy Ballinger, the newly elected representative for the city, today asked her that. And she said that she thought they had pushed the deadline out into latter part of January. So we have two options. One, you could vote on the new language and we'll just approve this mayor signing it without having to come back again. Or we can do it in January.
Okay. I would suggest that we approve it with the new language if everybody's comfortable with the clarification.
Andre?
I can, yes, sir, I can answer your question about the deadline too. I spoke with Calvin Hill about it. The absolute drop dead last day is the, it's a date in the first week of February. I don't recall the exact date. But Calvin also said that the quicker we get this done and to the delegation, the better chance it has of them deciding to present it. Just because we unanimously approve it and get it to the delegation doesn't mean they're going to even present it to the legislature. This has to be approved by the state legislature. So if we push this out to the last minute, they don't really have time to think about it or talk about it. They're just going to shelve it. So it is important for us to get it done. And I want to go on record too saying I'll support whatever it takes for all seven of us to agree to some kind of term limits. So let's agree to agree. We're going to do this.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
And I've amended the motion to accept the clarifications presented by Mr. Cummings.
So the second, like the amendment?
You know, I just, just when he passes, Mr. Dyer and I spoke about this, let me pass this to him and make sure that he's concurred with the language before we vote for it.
It's only two lines. It's short. Can't come from you.
Yes.
While we're taking a break, the key thing is we've got to be 100%. And I think by doing it tonight, it's the first discussion, it shows that we're in the spirit of what we're doing and moving ahead on it. I think, I think it's key to get it done tonight.
And this language is fine. It said what I meant to say, or what I thought I was saying, so it's fine.
We have a motion in a second to approve term limits, to this be presented to the legislature to amend term limits with the language that Mr. Dyer and Mr. Cummings have discussed here tonight. Any other? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. All opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. I would suggest.
One comment. I think if they require 100% of approval of the delegation, I think even though you're not normally voting, we need your vote on this too.
Unfortunately, I don't believe that's, I don't have that option to do. Now, what I was going to suggest is very similar to that, is I was going to suggest that it would require the signature of all members of this body beyond there instead of just the mayor's.
I'll prepare that one.
Okay. All right. Okay, we move Mr. Ackles up. I guess we're in new business now. Actual authorization of budget amendment of up to $25,000 for funding of necessary equipment for the Internet Departmental Communication in case of emergency. This has to do with some radios, I believe, for the Public Works Department.
Mr. Mayor?
That we discussed.
Yes, it was. It was in the letter that Mr. Wood had passed out and failed to get the proper discussion. But if I make a motion, then we move ahead on the second.
Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye. All opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. All right. Item B, under new business, discussion of amendment of ordinance 2-22 regarding appointment of committees, Councilman Cummings.
Yeah, I think everybody knows that I don't like to change the charter every third meeting or fourth meeting. And Mr. Huffman brought out the inconsistency that existed between the charter and section 222 of the code. And I've taken it to change the code for two reasons, or three reasons, actually. The first reason is that I think council committees are defined in the charter and have been for a long time to be the prerogative of the mayor, and I don't think we should be changing the charter to allow council to pick themselves to be on a committee. I know Mr. Huffman is, at least he was quoted in the paper, think, well, we could have stacked committees. And I thought about this for a minute. Doesn't matter whether the mayor picks them or the council picks them relative to stacked because either situation, they could end up being a stacked committee. But I want one step further and I look back at the prior committees that we've had this year, which I've been part of or part of this council. And I went to the Fire Services Committee and we could see that the original Fire Services Committee consisted of Mr. Beresford, Mr. Bryant, and myself. And for sure, that wasn't, as we now know, months later, the stacked committee in any way, shape, or form. The second committee to do a five-year plan that the mayor designated consisted of Mr. Beresford, myself, and Mr. Huffman. I was originally at Mr. Goodwin, but because of time constraints, Mr. Huffman joined it. And again, I didn't see where that was any kind of a stacked committee. And most currently, we have a pension committee of which Mr. Huffman is chairing and I'm a member of it. Mr. Goodwin's a member. And again, I don't see where that presents any problem. Going one step further, the only function of the committees that I see is to alleviate the amount of time that we have to spend at council where we have significant issues to look at multiple options. And all the committee can do is make a recommendation to the full council anyway. So the ruling by the full council ends up deciding what we do or we don't do. So my wish is to bring this forward, to make the code consistent. In talking with Mr. Dyer, it was determined that I wouldn't be making an inconsistency if we clarified in the code the role of the mayor. And I did that by saying that the mayor shall be an ex-official member of all committees and shall vote in the event of a tie. A tie should never occur because our committees have been traditionally, and I would expect going forward, numbers of three. So that's what I'd like to move forward.
Any other, any other discussion? So are you making a motion?
No, there's no motion to make. This is the first reading. I will suggest that the second reading be at our regular voting meeting on the 17th of January.
As long as it's just a discussion, I will make that. I'm into it. I, too, we don't want to necessarily go in and start altering the charter too often. But the charter is a process and it's a document, it's a living document, and it needs to be changed when it's necessary. I happen to prefer on this particular subject what's in the code rather than what's in the charter. So therefore, I would prefer to change the charter versus the, to what the code says. And what the difference basically is, I think the appointments made and use the word in the code is concurrent with the city council. And that's the part that I differ with Mr. Cummings. I agree with him about changing the charter. We don't want to change it unnecessarily, but it's a living document and it's made to be changed when necessary. And we do have a differences in the charter in the ordinance here. I happen to prefer to have council have concurrents on the, any appointments. And that would be the verbiage in the ordinance to replace the verbiage in the charter.
The only last one is this, what I would suggest is rather than going into depth of discussion back and forth at this point in time, this will be a second reading and I'll ask for a vote. And those that concur with a different viewpoint can proceed on a different viewpoint. This just happens to be my viewpoint and if it doesn't carry them, it doesn't carry.
Mr. Rush?
The only comment I have, I have no problem with the way the charter's written and the mayor appointing the committees since they serve at his pleasure. Because, but what I do, and the mayor has always been an ex-official member and tradition has, he's been voting. And that has worked fine. But as far as having to be able to put a vote in the event of a tie on a committee seems to be somewhat nonsensical because the committee is only going to make a recommendation to council. And if the committee is divided, then it brings a divided committee to the council and we make the decision here. So having the mayor cast the tie-breaking vote at the committee seems to be, to me, just the uncertainty.
Mr. Mayor? I don't have any objection to removing that the mayor just doesn't vote. I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay. All right. Okay, this will constitute the first reading and we'll come up again at the, I assume it will be on the work session for further discussion and then for a vote on January 17th. Okay, City Manager's report. Oh, did I? Yeah. You got a copy of that request? Uh, yes. It's 9:00 AM to 4:30 every Saturday. Yeah, this is requested for, on land planning on behalf of Latimer Construction. 6:30, 6:50, 6:90. And this would be effective Saturdays from 9:00 to 4:30 until June of 2013. Do I, we have a motion to approve? Have a second? Any other discussion about it? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye.
Mr. Bryant? No. I guess if everybody's okay with it, we're not even detailed in preparation.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that at 9:30, at 9 o'clock, a late enough start on a Saturday, that you wouldn't be serving. Too many people coming out there at 7:00 or something on a Saturday.
Well, I'd just like to remind them, if there are enough complaints or whatever, we can vote this.
Sure. All right. No further discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye. All opposed, no? All members voted for the motion with Mr. Wilson with his one second. Council, introduce. I was withdrawn, I was late. I had City Manager.
Are we, are we to adjourn to executive session?
Shortly. I got a couple of things. Yeah, that's, we will. I'd like, I'd just like to make a few comments. And I think tonight has been a better meeting in many respects in that we have been able to bring what minds we have left to some sort of consensus about some issues here. But, you know, lately, a lot of us have had, I guess most all of us have had, you know, our children and grandchildren on our mind. And really not just because it's Christmas, but really because of the horrific event that occurred in Connecticut. You know, it gives us pause to realize, I think, what's really important in our lives when we see things like that happen and we feel that. And we think not only, I guess, of our children, but others, if you don't have children, you certainly feel for the children of other people. And as much, as many of us on the council, much effort that we put in into the responsibilities and the commitment that we have to you, and as much as Ellie accuses me of having no other life but the city, and some of you do as well, I know that. You know, I believe that we all really know what's important. Nevertheless, our work here is important. Nevertheless, our work here is important because of those that we affect, not only in the short term, but more importantly, I think, in the long term. It's the future, it's the future Canton for our children and grandchildren that's most important, and we must all work together to build a city, I think, that's worthy of our children. It's been a rough road, as some of you know, Jack, it's been along the whole ride, from January 2008, when this administration began amid the financial abyss. The road of transition will always be rough when you go from a virtual closed city to one open, and where public input is not only permitted but encouraged. When mayor and council members get elected, we are not suddenly anointed with all-encompassing knowledge. We know no more than those who put us here. It is our job to listen to input from all our citizens, and from that, develop a city that's moving forward toward your vision. I've listened to public input for the last five years, and I believe we are currently on the right path toward your vision, vision for the city, a vision that I will discuss in my State of the City address later in January. A vision is something to be worked toward and yet never to be completely achieved. It is dynamic and ever-changing, just as we all change as circumstances and desires change. I encourage this council to move cautiously in developing a direction and vision for the city. Take the time to talk to the citizens, hold public hearings, and as a result of this, convey your thoughts to the full council. While it's important to dream and develop an unrestricted vision for our city, it is equally important, I believe, to develop a realistic vision, which can be accomplished within the real world of financial and economic constraints. We can, however, continue to move our, move forward toward your vision only if this council works cooperatively. I hope you've seen the beginning of a more cooperative council tonight. I believe that we must build and will build a trust among this council for each other and for the commitments that we make, and I think that we may have tonight, hopefully, there's still a rough road ahead, I'm sure, but I think that we may have a beginning of some understanding of each other, and we will work, hopefully, we'll work better in the future, so. All right. Now, entertain a motion with the county.
I had two things real quick down on our, on our report, one on an exceedingly sober note, you alluded in your comments, Mayor, to, to children, but the Georgia Municipal Association has asked the city of Canton, and in coordination with other cities across the state, at 9:30 tomorrow morning, ask our churches across the city to, to ring their bells, and for each of us as citizens to pause for a moment of silence in memory of those 20 children and six adults who lost their lives last, last Friday, and so we are asking churches across the city of Canton, we did, I think, communicate that to, to our friends in the media, and are asking our church members and all of our citizens to participate in that very special moment tomorrow morning. On a somewhat more humorous note, I couldn't help but notice something, I couldn't help but think tonight, this, this city council tonight really dealt with some pretty consequential and significant issues, and I thought this so very admirably. Talked about charter changes.
That's significant.
Talked about term limitations. Talked about emergency response equipment acquisitions, so the staff can respond in the event of emergencies. Talked about multimillion dollar improvements to our fire department, public safety, safety of our citizens and, and property. Talked about multimillion dollar park construction. Talked about changes to pension programs. Again, a lot of things, very significant, were discussed tonight. I couldn't help but notice, those of you who read the line of paper might have noticed the same thing, another city in our state, and I don't say this to make, make fun of anybody, but I just thought it was humorous what some other city councils deal with while ours was dealing with the issues that we just, just mentioned. This unnamed city, I'll at least not name it, it was named in the line of paper, on Monday had a, a reading, first reading of an ordinance there that says, "Any person or group riding or otherwise directly in control of any horse, mule, or donkey in a parade shall provide at each person's own expense a follower who shall follow along behind such animal or group of animals and collect any excrement dropped by such animal before the next person or vehicle crosses over the port where such waste was dropped." Now, I'm sure that Richard or somebody is going to be saying we need some followers up here, and if he wants to volunteer, we'll certainly take his name into consideration, but I did think it was humorous, while, while our folks are dealing, again, with some pretty significant issues, what some other cities also have to deal with at the same time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cummins?
One last point I'd like to thank Mr. Wood for his written report to us. I like this, and I think it's a good idea, and I hope you continue to provide us to keep us on top of the issues that are going on within the city. Thank you.
Mr. Acken, let's make a comment, please.
Sure.
In your, in your final statements, you mentioned a vision on several occasions, and it's been something, I think you know that I've been, kind of, every time I get in a conversation, it comes, I bring it up, and I would like for this council and the mayor as well, to think about how we can better establish a vision or plan for the entire city of Canton to go forward, and how best to establish, for lack of words, a committee or another council that would be, cover many different organizations, not just council, but to start thinking about it, if we're going to bring on a economic development manager, that maybe we can lay the groundwork to what he might, we're interviewing, and what we want to get done. So that we can have, say, the various groups of DDA, tourism, council, I mean, we've got a lot of different committees that we could all pull together, or represent it from each of those areas, to really start to put down on paper what our vision and what our plans are, so that when that economic development manager comes on board, he's got a target to look forward to. And I, I would like to see that we think about that for, I would probably like to put that on the agenda next week.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss real estate and personnel. We have a motion second. Does a favor signify the saying aye?
Aye.
It's very likely that we will come back out and vote perhaps on some real estate acquisition, so the media will know that. If you want to wait, or if you want to call.